We've done the college of allegiance, so I'll call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen November 6th to order. Are there any additional agenda or consent?
Mark, I'll just add that we're going to have a special visit today from the 15 new soccer team that just won the state cup. And they have a game and they're going to be here between 7:45 and 8:00.
Well, we should slow down then.
Yeah.
But we're looking forward to seeing these...
To recognize them.
They're 15 new?
15 new.
15 new state soccer champions?
Yep.
Coming from East Lime, and that is a big deal. That's the World Series of Soccer, I guess, right?
Yeah.
So looking forward to seeing the kids come in tonight and their families. If it's okay with the Board of Selectmen when they come in, we'll add them in more than likely down toward the public comment and select the response. But if we're...I don't want them to suffer through anything either if they come in, but we won't interrupt. So any delegations? We've kind of gone through the public hearing comments. Is there anybody like to speak to the Board of Selectmen tonight? If not, approve the minutes of the October 16th.
I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of October 16th, 2019, as submitted.
Second.
Any corrections or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Terrific. Discussion of possible action of the Police Commission?
Consent calendar?
Consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of November 6th, 2019, in the amount of $11,206.11.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Am I good, Kevin?
You're good.
Discussion of possible action? Police Commission ordinance? What's your pleasure?
Want me to move, put a resolution out, and then we can discuss it? I'll move the filing. Resolve to adopt the ordinance, modifying the ordinance concerning the Board of Police Commissioners. This ordinance shall take effect on January 6th, 2020.
Second.
We do have a motion and second. Let's have some comment. Anyone?
Yes, I will. Or you go first, Paul?
No, that's all right. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Mrs. Hardy, if you'd bring your mic close, I know that disrupts your workspace.
Yes, it does. I'll yield to Paul.
Mr. Dagel.
Is in fact Chief Finkelstein a member of the commission?
There's a lot...maybe I should answer stuff that came up from...no, Mr. Finkelstein is not a member of the commission. No...well, we had a police commission before we had a police chief. They hired the police chief. Members of the police department are hired and fired by the police commission. The Board of Ed is also run separately and autonomously from the First Selectmen's office. Currently, the First Selectmen is not in charge of the police commission. This doesn't do anything but take one person off the police commission and give a citizen a chance to be on the police commission. The First Selectmen's job by nature is...has an agenda. And that agenda might include, you know, keeping the budgets low and all that. And I think it's a narrow...I think the Board...the police commission has a very narrow charge, responsibility, and that is of the police department, whereas the First Selectmen is far more broad and far more bigger picture. The First Selectmen doesn't sit on the zoning commission, although there's many times I wish I was there based on some decisions. The Board of...the First Selectmen doesn't sit on any other board or commission in town. He's ex officio...he or she is ex officio to many and meets with department heads and chairpersons for guidance. Again, fitting the puzzle pieces together. But this doesn't change the fact that no one single person's in charge now. Well, there is a person in charge. It's called the First Select...it's called the police chief. And just like the superintendent is the one person in charge of the public education system, and that person will answer to the Board of Ed in that case or police commission that. So I want to clear up some of that. If some of your questions are aimed that way, I might as well answer some of that now. There's a few others here that have been brought up in the public hearing. But Mr. Dagel, I'll let you continue.
The ordinance says that the chief of police can only be suspended or removed by the Board...the Commissioner...the Board of Commissioners. So does that apply to all police officers and employees of the police department?
The...I think the police chief...again, this doesn't change however that works now, and I'm unfamiliar with their bylaws and how police...there's a whole Connecticut general statute on the responsibilities of a police commission. We're not making this up. This is not something that we're making up. The...I think the police chief has the power to discipline and make, you know, calls, but has to back himself up to the police commission. So it runs in tandem, on parallel tracks.
Paul, on the first page under 3217 for the powers, it says the Board shall have the sole power of appointment, promotion, and removal of the officers and members of such departments.
So the chief is treated like all the other members of the department?
Yeah. And, you know, obviously from experience, you can't...you have to have just cause to remove anybody.
Of course you do, yeah.
And Connecticut statute is pretty specific when it comes to that.
And is the chairperson of the commission, really the person who's in charge, similar to other boards and commissions?
No, he's one vote. So just like the First Selectmen sitting on the police commission was one vote of seven, not in charge and not any higher responsibility, the chairperson, although there's always responsibility with a chair of any board or commission, Board of Ed...
Or orchestrating the meetings.
But, yeah. And orchestrating paperwork and all that. But no, not in charge.
Okay, thank you.
The police chief is.
So I had.
Thank you. Mrs. Hardy?
Well, I'm going to differ with your opinion that this is the same as other boards and commissions in town. I feel that there's a very different sense of interaction with the public than other commissions, such as planning or zoning. And I do not feel that the role of ex officio serves the public well. Ex officio speaks at the desire or recognition of the chair. The ex officio does not have a vote. And I feel that this, as I said, this board deals with the public, or this commission deals with the public in a very different manner than our other boards and commissions. I feel that there should be a member of the public...a member of the commission who is elected by the public and not just made up...made up of all appointed people. And so therefore, I am not going to be voting in favor of the modification of the ordinance.
Okay. Anyone else?
Are there any examples of other commissions that have elected officials?
Very rare.
I did some research on that.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I did do some research for that a while back. Waterford is the only town that has the First Selectmen as a voting member of the commission. Their vast majority of them have...there are some towns that don't even have commissions, but that's not...that's the exception rather than the rule. But in New Haven, I forget, there's, I think, 43 towns where the First Selectmen or mayor is ex officio to the police commission. And this is very similar to what pretty much is done throughout the state. And there are state statutes governing the conduct of police commissions and so forth. And here again, even when we had the police chief or the First Selectmen technically designated as the police chief over the last several decades, that didn't give that individual any authority over any operational or really almost any administrative action of what the police do, because so much of that is governed by state statute, and you have to be qualified. And as it says here, the chief of police has to have, you know, be certified through the state police...for the Connecticut Police Officer Standards and Training Council. So I'm okay with this because, you know, this board still has the ability to appoint people who are responsible and capable, and I think we've done a good job of that. So I'm comfortable with this alteration. And I think they're still going to be responsible, not only to the public, this board, but to the judicial branch of the state as well.
Comments?
So I'll just follow on. I concur with Kevin. The...I understand Roseanne's concerned, however, the only way I would see that being effective is if the First Selectmen was required to be chairman, like with water and sewer.
Right.
Other than that, they're just one of seven voting members with no more influence than anyone else. So if that was what we had here, then that would be a different subject for me. But I'm okay with out...a matter of fact, I prefer, Kevin mentioned before, you can have two hats on, one, you're voting on a budget, and then you're going to influence the budget here. I'm okay with it being another appointed citizen. So I'll be voting in favor of it.
I think that when the town charter was written, even though it was in the 50s, I think that there was a specific reason that they made the First Selectmen's position to be chief of police. And I think we have done a good job of appointing members to the commission. But I would disagree that the First Selectmen, or I would say that the First Selectmen carries more weight because he or she has been elected by a majority of the townspeople. And that's quite different than being appointed. So while I've heard some arguments here that are quite persuasive, it's not enough to persuade me to change my mind.
Okay. And I respect your comments, as you know, Mrs. Hardy. Being the only person that's been in this position in the history of this town of being a First Selectman and being on the police commission, I did find some conflict that I was one of seven and I didn't trump...even though I was elected, I didn't trump anyone else. Everyone is equal on that commission as on all commissions, right? So...and if you remember, this body, when we decided to have a police commission, struggled with, should they be elected or appointed? And it was decided mostly for many reasons, but to not make it political. We just went through an election, and things can get political. It's good that we choose people who are qualified, not just popular or might have a good-looking lawn sign. And that is the case in other areas. So I just found some conflict with budgeting especially, with the fact that I am the First Selectmen, I'm sitting next to the chairman who really has the say in the agenda and all that too. And I...and also just trying to also find that balance between respect and humility of all seven of us are equal and wanting to maintain that. So I, for one, support the...and by the way, the police commission voted on this. This isn't mine, so you know this. There's the police commission voted, and I'm sure the vote number, I think it was a unanimous vote, to do this. And this would start in January if it passes. Any other comments?
Yes.
Sure.
And with all due respect to the positions that have been taken under Board tonight, I do support this change to the ordinance. I think there's...if the First Selectmen also was a voting member of the Board, I think it could be viewed, even though it may not be so, but it may give the appearance of too much influence by the First Selectmen. And I think that's a concern. We have come through an election. We've been given authority by the voters to delegate responsibilities, and this is an instance of such a delegation. They've entrusted the Board of Selectmen to appoint members of the police commission. And I think that's where our influence should end. I think it should be limited to that. We have a chief of police that is responsible for the police department. If the chief of police has an issue, he has a number of authorities that are outlined in the ordinance, the chief of police comes back to the police commission. And I think they should really act as much as possible as an independent vessel. We've entrusted responsibility to them as a board. I think that's where we have to leave it. And again, it emphasizes how important it is, how we deliberate in the selection of commissioners to the police commission. So I stand in support of the change.
The other comment? I'll call the vote then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any abstentions? Is there anyone left? Okay. 510. And thank you for your research and your thoughtful comments on both sides of this argument. And thank you for public comment as well. If it's...so we'll close this matter out, and this will be effective per the ordinance when we start making appointments in January. We'll be able to fill an extra seat. If it's okay with you, I'd like to break from our agenda and insert what Mr. Salerno asked us to do is to welcome in the state champs. Is that...do you think that'd be cool? First of all, is that good with the Board of Selectmen? Okay, so let's...
Where would you like me to...
I don't know.
Let them sit in the front row.
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we just have them sit in the front, look at the camera?
Why don't you stand up in front right here? Stand up.
Yeah, we'll get a picture when they...yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, your 2019 state cup U-15 soccer champions.
This is a big squad.
This is the one I'm watching.
How are you?
All right. Bailey, come on in, try to lay it. Come on in, and we're gonna have all the kids together for these, so we can do a photo.
Wow, we're gonna need a bigger room.
This kid's gonna run faster than you. This is the biggest audience we've had in a while.
Mr. Salerno, why don't you get us started?
Yes. So I just want to extend an invitation to the team. Coach Axel, I know you've had this team for a long time. I know a lot of these kids, I've coached some of them in other sports. I know how hard this team has worked. This was a long, long way to get here. I know this is your last year before a lot of you go to high school, so this is a big deal for you guys, and we're really proud of you. We know you put a lot of effort into it, and all the coaches here. So I thought it would be appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to recognize you guys, for you guys to come in here and be recognized.
Kevin, could you get the camera on the kids? We don't want to see Mr. Salerno.
I just didn't, because he was speaking. I had it all set. It was all set up for them.
Congratulations, guys. That's a big deal. Did you guys have a game tonight?
Yeah.
Did you win?
Yeah.
Stupid question, right? Of course you did. So I'm going to give you a pin. This is a pin we give very special people in East Lime. This is a lapel pin, so when you put it on your tuxedo, you can...well, you probably aren't doing that. But what I would like you to do is behind every great athlete in every great town, you have a support system. And you probably have more than one person in your life that's driving to your games and all that other stuff. So I'm going to give you this pin, but I don't want you to keep it. I want you to give it away to someone very special to you. It might even be someone that isn't driving you to the games but meant a lot to you and inspired you, okay? So I'm going to give you this lapel pin, and I'm going to congratulate you on a job well done, and we'll make today officially East Lime Soccer Club Recognition Day in the town of East Lime.
Everybody's handing it out. Can I have a few words to you guys and approach you?
If you want to come right to...yes, please.
I'm gonna keep the camera.
Is it on? Yes.
Yes, it is.
All right, so I want to also ask the kids, how do you like the fields we're playing on?
No.
So I always say, to make a championship team, it takes a village, literally, and it starts at, you know, every different angles. One of the blessings we have in this town, I want to thank you, obviously representing the town for us here today. It couldn't be for East Lime Soccer Association to have the success without the resources we have. I mean, quite frankly. We have volunteers, we have the fields, and we have unlimited support by the town whenever we need it. So with that, we give you a thank you back. You are part of this championship team, which created history. It's the first time the East Lime Soccer Association ever that a team won the state championship. So hopefully, that's a trend to be continued. And what I also love is, and what we have instilled in these boys, is a pride in their community, a pride in their town. And they stood up for themselves and for the town, conducted themselves really impeccable, and played, of course, dangerous and competitive and got the job done. So with that said, thank you for recognizing us here tonight. It's special. Could you stay here, first of all? Thank you. You're the head coach, Axel? I am the head coach here for five years now. Could you introduce your assistants? Absolutely. Jerry Salem, originally from Lead Yard, and had joined me five years ago as well. Thank you. Jerry is a very tactical coach. He's getting the job done when I fall apart. And then Steve Novick. Everybody knows Steve Novick. He started with me my career, and then I asked him this year to help me out again. And he is unbelievable. He does all the things my wife knows I can't do that's administrative duties. And then I have another scout, Kevin Stefanski. And he was instrumental on getting to the opponents we had to face, Madison and Simsbury, and scouting them out and telling us what we needed to do to get the job done. And he got the job done too. So thank you.
Well, for that, I'm from East Lime High School, class of '94, and thanks to Roseanne Hardy and the other three.
I think we get you in there.
Came back to town to bring the next generation of kids in. So thank you very much.
And now we let you get back to business, right? We'd rather do this. This is a lot better. I have some special pins for the coaches, and these are scalp shells. Congratulations.
Thanks, Ken. Good job. I'm enjoying it. I love you guys. Thank you so much.
We appreciate the shout-out you gave to the town, because it all works together, right?
Absolutely.
We really appreciate that. But we appreciate the parents and those coaches, generation after generation of kids coming through, building a program, because it doesn't just happen. It builds. So thank you all. I think we owe them another round of applause. Do you like this, guys? Thank you. Remember, those kids know of someone special in your life that has helped you get successful, okay? Remember that. We know this is not the last time we're going to see you guys. That's right. Because you're going to stay as a squad, and you're going to keep on playing, you get into the high school. We're going to have state champion varsity teams.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to stick around for that. I might be around a few more years. Come on. Can you all say a loud "thank you"?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for coming, guys. Parents, thank you. Thank you, coaches. All right, let's get out, beat the fight the way we came. Thank you, Axel.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks. You made the day of your kids.
That's awesome.
I'll see you at this. Hey, how'd they make out? No, in Stone Temple. No. Axel?
We just took one tonight. With the company. Yeah, that'd be great.
How'd they make out in Stone Temple? All right. Great job. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. is the team. Congratulations. I liked the Lead Yard game this year, although after everybody getting hurt, that three to nothing win was great. All right. Have a good night. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. It's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno.
Yes.
Well done, Mark.
That was awesome.
Nice to see that happen. And those kids are just bright-eyed, and they're eager to come back and win it again, and it's great. It's great. Our new business tonight, discussion of possible action of the Board of Selectmen 2020 meeting schedule. You can't be serious, but we are. So meeting schedule is announced. There are a few changes, so I'm going to want you to focus on the January meeting, because we're not going to meet on January 1st.
No.
So we pushed everything out a week. We'll inform the Board of Finance that they should also plan on meeting on the third week of January, not the second, when they put their schedule together. There was that. Was there anything else, Mrs. Anderson? Was it July? No, July's...July, we left whole. November looked okay with Thanksgiving and also with Veterans Day. Sometimes that makes that an interesting situation. Everything else is the same?
November 4th will be the day after the election again, right?
But not ours. Well, it'll be the presidential election, not ours, so...
Statement.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move to approve the Board of Selectmen 2020 meeting schedule as submitted.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that moves along then. The ex officio reports, we've all been busy out there, I know, in the streets and meeting our people. Are there any ex officio reports?
I don't have any, because the library board is meeting as we speak. So we had a conflict there. I think I have Board of Ed this month, so I'll be going to that. Other than that, I'm planning meetings next week or something, so...
I don't have a report this evening.
Same thing, Youth Services and Parks and Rec have not met since our last meeting.
Right. Yeah, same situation. One of my meetings is going on right now.
Right now?
Yep. Next time. So we had a very productive Public Safety Building Vision Committee meeting, where the architect came in with a third concept plan that at least preliminary discussions seems to be supported by the commission. We will be meeting again tomorrow evening to, first of all, identify any comments or questions we have on the cost estimate that accompanied that two-point...accompanied that concept, excuse me, and possibly, depending on the feelings of the commission, there's a possibility we would approve that concept. Once approved, that would release the architect to go start the final schematic design. As long as the rough order or manual cost estimate is within striking distance or at or below, the budget that remains of the $1.7 million, I'm confident that we will be in a position to approve the concept. And I'll just state that, you know, the final cost of this project is going to be determined when the design is done and the construction bids are received. So as long as we're in the ballpark of that 1.7, I'm very confident that we should go ahead and proceed with the final design, get our construction bids, and then make the choices of, you know, what is must-have, nice-to-have, or, you know, want-to-have. So more to follow. We'll see how tomorrow evening goes, and we'll go there. And I'd just like to congratulate my fellow members of the Board for your reelection. And I'd like to thank the residents of East Lime for supporting this Board. In my three years on this Board, it's always been a cooperative Board that works well together, and I look forward to the next two years working together and serving the residents of East Lime. So thank you. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Dagel.
Thank you, Paul.
We lost a great member of our community this week. Bill Jezerski, senior, passed away. He was our tree warden, WJ Tree Service up on the north side of town. Of course, his family, Dana and...
Mike.
Mike, his son. Jeepers. Mike, his son, both members of our police force. And my heartfelt sorrow and prayers go out to that family. They lost their matriarch just a couple of years ago, and Bill was a good man and, again, served this town as its tree warden, and I think his dad before that?
Yes.
Yes. So the Jezerskis have served this town for multiple generations and continue to serve now in the police force. So again, our thoughts and prayers with the family. I'd like to congratulate and echo Mr. Dagel's sentiments. First of all, congratulations to the fellow Selectmen. We all came from a different perspective to talk about this particular ordinance, and I think it's amazing. I think this, this town, this, this board serves the town very well. I'd like to also put a hearty congratulations to the winners, of course, but anyone who put their name on a slate and, and said, you know, I want to give back my town, I, I'm brave enough to do it, and, and I'm willing to give up myself to serve the town. And there's a whole lot of people, winners, losers, and, and they all should be congratulated for the willingness to serve. And, and we will be well represented in this town for another two years. Costco's opening a week from tomorrow, and if you're, if you're ready, it will, it'll be there for you. We're, we're working through the final details now to get their CO in place. Trucks are going in non-stop to fill up the warehouse, and it looks like it's good to go. Most of the street construct, most of the street construction has been done, but you saw them closing lanes down today because of, they're putting up permanent light posts in. And that moves along, and I met with DOT today on the next project, which is the, the removal of that bridge. And they are all systems onboard, and it's, it's, it's good to go. So, we're expecting about this time next year for construction of that, 2021. So, maybe it'll be the spring of 2021, so maybe fourteen months from now, that that bridge and the roadway, a three, a three-year construction project will kick in in that area. More, certainly more to come there. The Route One Bridge will be shut down for two weeks. Lover's Lane will be a super highway, Mike. You get out there and bring out a hairdryer, pretend you're shooting radar, and see if all hit their brakes in the noses, the car will come down. Route One Bridge is going to be shut down for two weeks, starting Monday, November eleventh. Believe it or not, the DOT was going to do it yesterday, Election Day, and I could just see the, all the satellite trucks in the parking lot here talking about voter suppression. The registrars wouldn't have been too happy about that either. So, we, we pushed them off for a week, and we're very happy to report that they were able to move some work around. So, but, but November eleventh to November twenty-fifth, there will be no access to go through Route One. We recommend all citizens that know this to go around, use Lover, use Society Road, go up, come down, but stay off of Route One unless you're local traffic, unless you're heading down up to Upper Paddock Answer. But at Lover's Lane, that bridge will be stopped, and coming from the other way, Heritage Road, that traffic will be stopped. You must use alternate traffic. Working with DOT, trying to make sure we have enough signage on the highway, at the intersection, extra police. If a tractor trailer goes down that road and thinks he's going through, he can't get down Lover's Lane, because he can't make the turn at the end to Dean Road. There's not enough radius, if that's the right word, Mr. Engineer. So, we're, we're very concerned about that, very, very concerned. So, we're, you know, all eyes will be on there, there'll be extra police coverage. But please spread the word, we'll be out on the East Line Public Safety page on Facebook, and we'll, we'll want everyone to spread that out there. We must remember for two weeks that that'll be shut down, and that will be a signal that we're nearing the end of that project. Not finished, but nearing the end of it.
What's the plan for, for the state to try to keep the tractor trailers from doing it?
Signage.
It's all going to be signage.
Signage. And, and I, I, I want barricades and, and local traffic only, and, you know, but they can't really do that, that far out, it's well over, it's a couple miles away.
I know.
So, you can't do that, but signage.
So, we should, our police should be aware.
Yeah, the police.
Whether that may happen, because that happened with the one near Upper Pat, where trucks were trying to get into the parking lot.
Yep.
And they couldn't get out.
Yep. We had that experience, so, and I just recommend that everybody, everybody stay away from that area as much as possible.
Yep.
Everybody, anyone else have any other comments? Public comment?
Mike Schultz, Lover's Lane. Do we have an estimate on when the police might move into the building? Are we talking several months, or are we talking one month for that, that part of it? And then, secondly, I just want to belabor, I don't want to belabor this, but in your thirty-two point seventeen powers, it has to state that the board shall have sole power, sole power of appointment, promotion, and removal of officers and members of such a police department. The other question we have, what about binding arbitration? Are they going to be involved in arbitration at all?
No, well, I can't answer that.
Thank you.
Got my own rules. Any other comments? Any comments on that? I, we've already, we've just gone through a four-year police contract that I negotiated, this board approved. So, binding arbitration remains the responsibility of the board of selectmen, or the first selectman as the designee. And that's the case. The, the police chief is, of course, not in the union, and he'll be the only, he's the only member of the police force not in the union, so he's capable of, first of all, knowing the contract and applying proper discipline per the contract. And it's, it's his responsibility to know that inside and out, as, as that contract delineates the relationship between a union member and the town. And he's our, our designee in that building. As far as timeline goes, Paul, can you answer that?
We're hoping to have the schematic designed done originally by December, may roll into January. And then, once we get the final design and get the construction bids, I think a lot will be driven by, you know, the availability of, of the labor to execute it, so. Guesstimate, vice an actual committed timeframe, I would think the earliest would maybe be June, six months worth of rehabilitation work. It could be shorter, depends on how well it's manned and how quick the contractor can get it out. And at the outside, it may be August. So, but I will have a much better feel once we have the final design and we go out to bid to get the work done.
The contract landscape has certainly changed since the, we first did the estimate of that building. While, while the, the state suffers from recession still and recovery from that, the contractor and, and that kind of, that kind of labor is, is rebounding quite briskly. Maybe EB's part of that problem, a good problem to have, if that means our economy is starting to rebound properly. But we'll know better when we go out to bid.
And once we, once the commission approves the concept, then we'll get a good feel for the actual completion of the schematic design, and then hopefully be able to judge that a little better.
Right. Anything else? Any other comments?
I'll shift to your chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Good night, y'all.